Okay, I'd like to call this joint special meeting to order. The date is Thursday, January 23rd, 2014, and I welcome the Marquette County Solid Waste Authority. We're have a joint meeting along between Marquette City Commission and the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority. First off, I'd like to, all commissioners are present, I don't think we have to call the individual role. And now I'd like to turn it over to Chairman Yell to open the meeting on behalf of the Solid Waste Authority.
I will call the joint meeting with the Marquette County Solid Waste Authority and Marquette City to order, noting that all Marquette County Solid Waste Authority members are seated and present.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you Chairman Yell. Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a, are there any agenda changes? We have an agenda here, or any, any member of the meeting desire to make a change of the agenda? Oh, okay. We can't make them. Okay. Well, then let's approve the agenda. Mr. Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved.
Thank you.
Second please.
Thank you, Jarmalankinen. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Oh, okay, it has to be a commissioner, okay. Commissioner Coyne. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne to approve the agenda. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. The yes have it unanimously. I have no announcements. Public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name, physical address, and making public comments. Anyone wishing to address the, the joint meeting? Anyone? Is there any make up public comment? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. And we have one item that we have to act on before we can get into the topic of the meeting, that's the consent agenda. We have approved minutes of the January 13th meeting and a trail access permit for the McCollum Ski Marathon. What is the pleasure of the commission on the consent agenda? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Ryan?
Second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Ryan to adopt the consent agenda. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion is approved unanimously. The next item is new business, presentation discussion on recycling update. We don't have any agenda stuff, and I'll turn this over to the city manager to start us off.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, staff will be led by Kyle Whittney, our new Assistant City Manager, supported through the presentation of Superintendent Campenzi and Director Aho.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say good evening, and thanks to everybody for, for making the trip out here from your various municipalities. Just a real quick, quick and dirty history, I guess. This is the second or third time that these two boards have had the opportunity to get together and talk about this subject in the last couple of years. And in that time, it's become clear that recycling and landfill diversion, composting, is important in the community, to the elected and appointed officials on these boards, and to a broad range of wide community groups. And so this discussion has been taking place cooperatively between the staffs of the authority and the city. And I think, I mean, you'll hear more about the, how that discussion has gone, and the process of moving this joint goal forward has gone, from the presentations from Superintendent Campenzi and Director Aho. They're going to be presenting kind of the, I guess, the status of that joint vision. I do want to say, you all were, were supplied with a copy of the draft agreement that has been put together. And though this is a special meeting, we're not going to be asking anyone to take a vote on that agreement tonight. This is just a chance to get your input, to hear thoughts that can be worked into that agreement if necessary, and to, I guess, get a coherent vision moving forward. And then that agreement's going to go back to, to both boards individually. So with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Scott and Rick.
We'd like to just make a little presentation on what we've been working on for the, the past several months, and moving forward based off the discussions that were had during those meetings that Kyle mentioned in his intro. This has been a, a program where we've been working off of community needs that have been identified through the years. We frequently have people outside of our residential program, being people that live in, in multifamily residential, and different commercial groups, asking about how they can better participate in recycling. We have often probably three to four different calls a year from different commercial groups looking to participate in organics, which is also part of something we'd like to divert from the landfill, to basically preserve the landfill as long as we can. First slide here is just kind of a, a mission statement that we've, we've come up with as we've been working together on that, and I think it kind of serves the city's program needs for the residents. And being members of the group of 22 municipalities that are part of the landfill authority, I think it also suits that well. And that is to maximize the life of the landfill by effective diversion of recycling and organics from the waste stream, while at the same time controlling the costs that are associated with the, the solid waste program for the residents. And moving forward, when we talk about recycling, we are talking about including organics diversion as part of that. We had quite a bit of consideration through the past few years. This actually started with a recommendation made back in, in 2007, where we were looking at places where we could relocate our compost operation, and then even later, when we, we developed a rubbish drop-off site, that was something that we knew would only be there on a temporary basis. And as, as I go on here, I'll talk a little bit more about that site. But the three sites that were identified, there's a former Superfund site on County Road 550, there's the Roundhouse property immediately adjacent to the service center, and then there's the Flink Farm off of South McLoughlin or County Road, or State Highway When we're making different considerations, originally we looked at this as, okay, the city is forever going to run these programs, location as long as it's convenient for city residents will be okay. Now, as we're looking at this through our discussions, we kind of looked at it from a broader scope, where there could be not only Marquette City involvement, but involvement from surrounding communities along the 41 corridor. So as we were considering, you know, we wanted to make sure that the sites we're looking at were the best use of the land. We wanted to make sure that we had city utilities available, you know, not only for, for fire protection, but just for, you know, cleanliness of the site, dust control if needed. You know, we wanted to make sure that, that this site would be well-suited, or fit into wherever we came up with a location. The location and the logistics of that, one of the big topics, at least in the city, has been truck traffic. We wanted to really look at what would minimize the truck traffic for this operation. And we felt that having something accessible off of South McLoughlin, and additionally, something that was off of 41, South McLoughlin, I tease into 41 there, that that would be something where you could bring materials that were collected, not only from the city, but our neighboring townships, or wherever along the corridor there, you could bring them in and kind of funnel everything down McLoughlin towards the landfill, which will allow you to do a lot of your collection around town with smaller vehicles that aren't as disruptive as the, the larger trucks. And then from that point, then your trucks would already be on a major highway, and use those from transport from there. Minimal impact, we wanted to make sure that the, the site and the operation was going to fit well with the surrounding neighbors. And we wanted to make sure that we had good access, and the site will have direct access to McLoughlin. And we wanted to make sure that we could do it at a reasonable cost. So looking at, at the three sites, you know, really the controlling one was making sure it was the best use of the land. We've got a site that's adjacent to a former city landfill, or dump, as they referred to back when it was open. So to the south, we've got, and to the west, we really have no neighbors for this site. We have a few residential neighbors to the north. Kyle and I took the opportunity Tuesday of this week, and I think Kyle and our city manager took a previous opportunity to that, to kind of go out and knock on a few doors. It was pretty well received from the, the few neighbors we were able to catch at home. They had some concerns, but we were able to address those concerns, and I, I think the biggest one was the second one from the bottom there, the site access, and how it would be accessed. The Flink Farm site has several benefits to it. You've got a lot of natural features there. We've got a, a borrow pit that's already there, that'll work well to incorporate into the, the site plan. We've got some hills that are well-vegetated, that provide screening along the edge of the site. We've got a ravine to the south, and as I said, there's no neighbors there, but that's, that's well-vegetated as well. And we've made plans that, for that gap in between the natural features, we'll be able to create a berm and, and vegetate that as well, so that the site is well-screened from the neighborhood. Site, as I mentioned before, is, is sited on a arterial road, that will be able to handle any traffic needs of the site. Site is located on the south edge of town, again, so we can take smaller vehicles to bring it to this transfer point, utilizing that hub-and-spoke concept, and then use larger trucks to take it to the landfill for processing, prior to taking it to market. As I mentioned, mitigating impact was a big concern, and that was, you know, when we, we talked about the, a, having a temporary site where we would build a ramp and load large containers previously, you know, that was, it was something where a few concerns were raised, and, and we wanted to make sure that we addressed all those. So we've, we've taken access, and it's direct to McLoughlin Avenue, so any traffic for this site will not be using Pioneer Road. Operational hours, we're looking at 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and shortened Saturday hours. And really what that amounts to, even the, the extended hours, are simply to take the hours for some of our city operations, and hold those over as far as a compost site or rubbish drop-off. The site will be secured, it's fenced. As I mentioned before, we'll combine natural features and earth and berms to, to screen the site. We've got onsite water planned for dust control, fire protection. And if you look at the hours, we're not expecting to need a lot of lighting, but we will make sure it's dark sky lighting for any lighting that would be used for the site. One of the big steps is coming up with an agreement to do this type of recycling collection center, that not only the board feels comfortable with, but the city commission feels comfortable Really, as you, as you look at this, this is just a summary. A lot of you are, are seeing this for the first time, we're realizing that. The intent behind tonight's session is, is not to, you know, force action, or to even suggest that anybody would take any action tonight, but it's to kind of bring everything out in the open that we've been working on, and really is a educational tool. This operating agreement is certainly, you know, something you can discuss. It's, it's something that, as we're working collaboratively together, this is our, our best guess, it's something that's, it's going to work well. The authority would construct the recycling collection center on the site. The city and, and the authority are, are working jointly on, on preliminary site work. Permitting and approval process is outlined in the agreement. The authority will own and operate the recycling collection facility. It's set up, at least for the immediate start of the, the site, where the city will deliver curbside recycling to the collection facility. And, you know, the agreement's set up basically right now, just between the city and the authority. You know, that's something, as I'll, I'll go on further here, obviously, as programs grow, and you can bring more different entities, whether they be municipalities, or commercial groups, or the multifamily residential, into the picture, the more you put through the site, actually, the more lucrative this could potentially become for everybody. The authority will market recyclables for profit. That's a program that the authority has already established, and has been offering to constituent municipalities for a little while now. The profit after recycling-related expenses will be split 60% to the city, and 40% to the authority. The authority may recover capital and operating costs of the facility through a facility processing material transport fee on a per-ton basis. Okay, so the, the idea behind all this is, we're not, we're asking the authority to make an investment, but everybody carries their own weight through the agreement. Authority may run other programs at their cost through the facility. You know, one such program that I, I think would be an excellent program for the facility would be the Household Hazardous Waste Collection. I think it'd make a lot of sense, that's an existing authority program. And the term of the agreement is 30 years. That's just what was proposed by Rick. So I'm, I'm sure that, that'll be a, a topic of discussion, but certainly that's, that's not something that has to be absolutely locked in either. Cost structure. Based on the information that Rick's provided, we can expect approximately $20 per ton profit after the operational expenses. Capital expenses that must be recovered in, in the fee are approximately $360,000 or $18,000 a year. And reports from our current hauler indicate about 800 tons are recycled annually. National average places that at about 2,600 tons. And for the sake of this, this study, we believe that through a little bit of education and some slight modification of the program, that, that 1,500 tons annually is a reasonable number to base the, the calculation off for this example. Using the 1,500 tons at, at $20 profit per ton, would be an anticipated profit of $30,000. And applying the 60-40 split, city would earn approximately $18,000, and the authority would earn $12,000. In this particular scenario, the city earns enough to cover the fee, and the authority earns $12,000 for investment into the program. Process controls along the way, I'm sure everybody has a interest in how, how this will, will come about. There's, there's several different control measures along the way, as you're going through and, and permitting a site like this. Initial staff planning is the phase that we've been going through now. Concept approval by the city commission and the authority, and that's something we'll be looking for in the, the near future. But as I mentioned, that's not something we're looking for tonight. We want to make sure you're all comfortable with this moving forward. Departmental review for all this. The Marquette County Solid Waste Plan has a citing mechanism that very clearly spells out different steps along the way, where you get various approvals from different agencies. There's zoning review through the city, site plan review through the city, and eventually the MDQ, DEQ will need to approve all of this. Timeline, there's several steps that we've already taken to make sure that we have a, a good feel that the site will work. We've gone through, and we've done a wetland delineation. We've gone through and done boundary and topographic field survey. And we've gained access through MDOT for access to M553. There's, there's some property deed work that's ongoing. The next step is what we've just been talking about, and that is a license and operating agreement for the site. As we move forward, once we have that, then that really gets the ball rolling for a lot of different things. That, that allows us to work a lot more with the public, and getting the word out of what this is, and start the education process for the public moving forward. Site plan building design, the next one really has, has nothing to do with the authority, it's, it's more for the commission, but that's kind of a timetable for us looking to put a new contract out for solid waste services. Our contract will be up at the end of September. We're looking at, and this is something that's already in place with the current contract, trying to get the authority to be able to, positioned to be accepting recycling from our, our current hauler in May, and possibly into June, for the start on that. There's county building code review, bidding, and construction, which we'd like to see taking place early to late summer. And we'd like to have a site that is, is functional by the end of the summer. So there, there is some immediate need to at least review and look at taking action in the near future to fit the timetable that's out there right now. What type of change should we be expecting for the program? As far as city programs that are currently out there? Rubbish drop-off program, essentially we'd like to keep it the same. We'd like to relocate it to the recycling collection center. In discussion with Rick, in seeing now, we've been running that program for, including the curbside, it's, it's been well over 10 years now. And so Rick's had a good opportunity to see the type of materials that are coming in through that program. He feels confident that we can start recycling some of that material coming in through that program, and that's why we've, we've attached it to this recycling center, and again, divert some of the, the material from the landfill. We're looking at equivalent schedule, and that's what I mentioned before, for the hours of the site. That's why we had seven to, to seven on there, to be able to continue to run an equivalent schedule for that program. Compost drop-off program, as I had mentioned before, we, we were looking for the highest and best use of the property. Having a, a compost site where it's located now, I think most will agree, that's not the best and highest use of the property. So as, as a city moves forward with projects that they're working on now on that site, this'll open things up and allow the city to move forward with that site. So I think that's, that's a big win for being able to move these programs. So compost site, again, equivalent schedule. The authority has an ability that's much greater than what the city has, to effectively and efficiently compost material. As I mentioned before, we looked at running sites on our own. The one real negative to the city, and, and one real reason for collaboration on, on this project is, for the city to move forward and, and move site, there's new requirements that have come out in the past few years, that would cause us to really make a huge capital investment if we were going to have our own compost site relocated at a different site. So the fact that Rick is equipped to do that- So the fact that Rick is equipped to do that out at the landfill really makes that seem like a win-win partnership as well. Christmas tree drop-off program, no change. Curb-side collection, we will have to see some changes for this. In order for the authority to handle the recycling, we'll switch from a single stream to a dual-stream collection. A real benefit to that is it provides a cleaner, more valuable product going that route if we can keep the streams separate. So the question probably is, what might that look like moving forward? It might be something to the effect of you do garbage every night of the week on its normal schedule as it is now, but you're recycling maybe we put out paper and fiber product one week, and the next week we put out rigids being plastics, glass, tin cans, things of that nature. There is proposed introduction of organic collection to further the mission of the landfill, but that'll be, a lot of the details for that will have to be worked out later after this agreement. And modified collection schedule, and that's what I just mentioned. Really no change for any of the special city collections, including spring, fall, leaf, brush collection. How does this program benefit the landfill and all its constituents? You could say that a cubic yard of airspace is only worth what it would cost to construct the cell divided by the volume of the cell. You could easily convert that to tons and assign a value to it, which would probably be less than the thirty-eight fifty tipping fee. But I guess I'd look at it in a slightly different way. And that is, per the intergovernmental agreement, the authority shall not operate as a profit or a loss, and therefore the cost of construction, operation, maintenance, associated administration, and long-term liability and maintenance is the thirty-eight fifty a ton being charged for the tipping fee. Diversion of recycling organics is an important mission of the landfill and its constituents because it represents a cost avoidance of that thirty-eight fifty for every ton that is diverted. Additionally, per the example with the numbers that we use there, you know, recycling can represent eight dollars of revenue per ton to the landfill. So that's the end of mine. Okay?
I'm Rick Aho. I'm the Director of Marquette County Solid Waste. Been interesting over the last few years. I've enjoyed working with Bill and Kyle and Scott. You know, we've come a long ways. So what I'm looking for here is to give you another view of the economics. I'm going to concentrate. From a sustainability standpoint, from an economic standpoint, this is a very good idea. You know, I think everybody likes to be ecologically sound. The question is, how much does it cost? Everybody always comes up with, you know, well, how much are we going to have to pay? So right now, the city of Marquette gets nothing for their recycling. What we're talking about is sixty percent of the net going to the city, which is sixty percent better than, you know, your current situation. The authority also benefits in that, you know, having a number of small recycling programs won't work. You know, it doesn't allow an isolated, logistically isolated area like Marquette County to do it effectively, and it will always cost if you have a fragmented system. So by consolidating the program with City of Marquette and the other municipalities wish to participate, well, we can, you know, do a lot of good. And we've offered the same agreement to the other municipalities of Marquette County, and some have taken it up and some haven't. Depends on their situation. So. So I'm a little bit more optimistic than Scott. You know, one of the things we have to do is we have to find out exactly what's happening here. You know, we have a good handle on the waste tonnage, but the recycling tonnage seems to be a bit of a mystery. So I'll call it two thousand tons. Now at twenty dollars a ton, let's, you know, again, this is a projection, but you're anticipating a value of forty dollars for the material, which isn't too far off from a historical standpoint. Now, twenty dollars a ton isn't a bad number as far as the cost involved to get it to the marketplace. So the net of twenty, so forty thousand dollars. Let's see. So again, the authority eight thousand, Marquette twelve thousand. An additional thousand tons on top of that. You know, right now, the material, let's say two thousand tons, is going elsewhere, and you have your revenues going elsewhere. Now you're going to bring that revenue back to Marquette County, to our municipality, in this case, Marquette, but also this is a countywide program where you can allow other municipalities to gain the volume perspective, that, you know, they would not be able to attain the pricing that you can get by bringing everything together. But, you know, after you put another thousand tons into the system, you're avoiding thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars in tipping fees on top of that. Okay? So. The authority's perspective is we have to keep solid waste forever. So thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents. You know, we've evolved a long time. Right now, we're constrained by the cost of fuel oil, the cost of plastic, like we used to line the facility, and the cost of steel. We have no control over those things. Our landfill is very effective, very efficient. It's world-class quality, but, you know, we're kind of running into the area where, you know, we've gone as far as we can, and after that, the inflation on those materials that we depend upon is going to dictate the pricing. So the only way that we can continue to give you the service we've given you for the last twenty-some years is to move on to something else like recycling, which offers a better opportunity. Now, with decreased tonnage into the facility, the landfill facility, you will see changes in the economics of landfilling. You know, your fixed costs will become important, but the idea is with the authority being intimately involved in the recycling end of this deal, that we'll be able to make the transition and a synergistic transition so that we'll be able to maintain our tipping fees and also bring in revenue. So the extra thousand tons, you end up with seventy-four thousand five hundred. So in general, we've taken away the cost issue. I mean, this is a financial benefit, period. And you also have the ecological improvement in our situation. That's one, you know, whatever doesn't go into the landfill facility doesn't have to be babysat for the next millennia. And the ton that you do not put in today will be worth a lot more at the end of the life of the facility. So. And, you know, to illustrate this, the authority takes in thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for every thousand tons of material that comes into the facility. We don't make any profit. So regardless of, you know, how many dollars it takes to process it, if we have an eight thousand dollar profit, we're still ahead. It still makes sense. So, you know, you look at it from the perspective of which would you rather have? You know, a benefit, a tangible benefit that can be utilized for the good of Marquette County, or landfill material, which you'll be babysitting forever. So. Let's see, do I have anything else? And, you know, with Marquette and the solid waste authority working together, the solid waste authority is in position to do something for all the municipalities that no individual municipality can do by themselves. Offering, you know, the utilization of this facility to other municipalities is something that they can't do. You know, so we can see a synergistic opportunity to avoid the fluctuations in the economics, the marketing of materials. And in order to control the situation, you want to have long-term contracts with the mills where you agree to a reasonable rate of return that's constant, and you have part of your waste stream or part of your recycling stream going to various places and your spot marketing, but, you know, you want to minimize the fluctuation. You define the material that you can dedicate to a single source, and you have a long-term contract. And, you know, we've seen some rough spots in the recycling costs or recycling values with China deciding they weren't going to take any material for a while. And those municipalities that had the long-term agreements were able to do quite well and avoid the problems because there still is the domestic use. It's the export use that, you know, was suffering. So I guess with that, Scott and I can answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. I entertain questions from any members at the DIES here. What I'd like to do is perhaps we could, you know, alternate an authority member, a commissioner, and as you desire to speak, if you kind of hold up your hand, let me know, and I'll mark it down on a sheet of paper and try to give everyone a chance. And if I miss you, waggle your finger at me threateningly, and I'll try to rectify it. So who's got the first question? Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, and it's not a complicated one. It's, I guess it wasn't clear in the presentation. Is the city going to provide the land for this site to the Marquette County Solid Waste Authority at no cost?
Yes, that'll be part of the agreement. It'll be on city-owned property.
And the estimated construction cost was, I know it was in here, but what was that again?
We had it down for three hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go to Commissioner Coyne.
I have six questions. First.
You get one.
Well, it's one, one with six parts.
Okay.
I have a question of the solid waste authority members. You know, we're hearing this. Am I correct or incorrect to assume that you're on board with this? I mean, I don't want to get all, you know, ask the other five questions if you're not on board, as you are. Okay. I have a couple of questions then.
You may proceed.
All right. Is there any incentive for the citizen to really get into this more? If I'm, you know, I'm a citizen and I put out all my co-mingled recycling stuff, why should I do more? And in the past, you've had some comments, you'd like to get this recycling stuff up to like eighty percent of the waste stream or more. What would incentivize me as a citizen to do that?
Okay, well, first you have a pay-to-throw system, so you won't be buying a lot of green bags.
Pay-to-throw.
Okay, so from a financial standpoint, you'll eliminate the, every pound you throw away is less bags. And it is possible, right now, there's a market for ninety percent of what you produce probably if you're the average person or the average family. The foam and the film are unsustainable. There are no markets for those things right now. So when you're putting those in your bag, you'll, you might think that maybe you shouldn't buy those in the first place. Okay? And the other materials, you know, it's indirect, but, you know, you're going to get paid for those in the long run. I mean, it's through your municipality, but you're going to get benefit for removing that material. You can, you know, most people like to be ecologically, you know, compliant or, you know, to be green as they can be, as long as they can. I mean, sometimes it's a convenience issue, but, you know, the city of Marquette has a pretty good program such that it's relatively convenient. The step into the organics portion of it to recover that material would be very important as far as the overall amount of material that you're recycling. I mean, that can be, become a valuable commodity with the proper processing. So Marquette can be the greenest city in the United States if it wants to. I mean, that, there's, I mean, you know, we're Uppers. We have pride in what we have. I mean, that's what we're about, and protecting what we have makes a lot of sense.
Next question is, if we then continue with the contract with waste management, is that rate going to go down since they're not going to do any recycling? Who would answer that?
They'll, they or whoever the hauler is will still be collecting recycling and delivering it because we still want to have it collected curbside. We don't want to turn it into a drop-off site where all the residents are coming in. But, but part of the idea and kind of tying this question into your first question was, as you are able to make more revenue off of recycling, you're able to use that money to offset any other programming you would like to do. So the idea is we are looking to drive the overall cost of the program down.
And you're talking with other cities and townships. Are you offering them the same sixty forty thing to participate?
Yes.
Is this going to be staffed, the projected site? Is there going to be somebody there?
Yes, it'll be staffed and secured, when it isn't staffed, and staffed anytime it's utilized.
Something when it is, secured when it isn't.
You're correct.
And. If you follow up to Mr. Ryan's question, the city is still going to own the land, but you're going to own the facility. Is that correct, or are you going to buy the land?
That's correct. It'll be, the land will remain an asset of the city of Marquette, but the building will be an asset of the solid waste authority.
My last question is, do you have any plan in this agreement to publicize or help encourage people to recycle? Despite what you said, there are people who don't, and this is a great opportunity to extend the life of the landfill and to lower the cost. Are there any plans with that, either with the solid waste authority or the city?
From an economic standpoint, it makes sense for the solid waste authority to publicize this and to illustrate what can be done with the material. We've, the solid waste authority's been talking about this for five years. It makes sense to have every fourth grader in Marquette County visit the facility and become operatives in regards to what they should do and what they shouldn't do. Fourth grade or fifth grade has been proven to be the best timeframe for a visit to the facility, both facilities, actually, the landfill and a transfer station. So from a financial standpoint, the better the recycling program operates, the better it'll be for any municipality that participates, plus the solid waste authority. I mean, doing it right guarantees you or as close as guarantees as possible, a good market and a quality material and seamless operation.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me ask just one question.
Okay. You're welcome. Any other questions? Commissioner Reynolds, do you have a question?
Two. First off, how did the number of thirty years come about? Is that just your proposal of thirty years for the contract?
Well, from an economic standpoint, in the solid waste authority's involvement, the longer a perpetual contract was proposed first, but your charter doesn't allow a perpetual contract, so we evolved into a thirty-year contract. You know, five years, a five-year contract, which has been proposed by other municipalities, you know, that's, the program will be maturing at that time, but, you know, should not even have achieved its full potential. So, you know, from the solid waste authority's standpoint in Marquette. know, from the Solid Waste Authority standpoint and Marquette County's perspective, investment outreach is necessary, and it takes a long-term agreement. But, you know, you're, Marquette owns a large portion of the Solid Waste Authority, so it makes sense that everything comes together. So that's how we arrived at 30 years.
Trustee Benzie, did you have something?
Yeah. First of all, I'm not sure that this board is entirely on, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm not sure that this board is entirely on board as he first suggested, okay? We have not had time to, in a public meeting, digest, discuss, and raise concerns that may be out there. One of the topics that I hear is the fact that the landfill authority is going to front the capital money to construct this facility, okay? And it was said there's 22 entities, okay, that own the landfill and that money. So one of the questions that's being asked is why we typically wouldn't bond such a facility. The fact that we have the money to construct the facility is, I guess, a credit to the financial management of the facility. But, you know, I think the question's appropriate to ask, if we do this here for the communities that are closest to it, which are probably likely to most benefit from it, what about the other, you know, and where's the benefit or where's the opportunity for that, that asset?
Well, and the same structure that we're talking about with this agreement could be utilized in all the municipalities. You know, it depends on the circumstance, you know, and what the municipality wants to invest in. I mean, the assets of the authority, the agreement, we're calling for a 30-year term, which can be extended indefinitely, but we have a definite end with the cost of the facility only being 20 years, you know, the paying off the facility being 20 years. There is a, you know, the city would be putting up a large, you know, eight and a half acres of property. Of course, I would prefer to have an interest rate, but that's the give and take.
Well, that's another question that has been answered, I guess, is what is the value of the land? Okay, we've talked about $360,000 capital investment from the landfill authority, but is the land the city is providing, what's the value of that?
You have to go through and do an actual appraisal of the property, but certainly if you looked at eight and a half acres within the city limits, that is a fair amount of money for acreage, I guess. You know, when you're looking, when you're looking at some of the property just to the north of there, that's gone for over $7 a square foot, you know, I think it carries a fair value, but certainly that's a, that's a number we can pull out and have it appraised as part of this.
Why don't we let Yorma, because we've kind of monopolized it up to this point?
My question would be, does the city supply the infrastructure, the water, sewer, utilities, power, or is that the landfill authority's responsibility?
As far as, as far as the construction, that's part of the number for that construction of the capital, as far as putting it in. As far as the operating expenses for that site, that would be charged basically to the site or part of your operating expenses. And then that would be recovered through that fee that was discussed, that would be applied on the material coming through the recycling center. So you'd be recovering it, in other words.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I think it was important to establish the fact that you guys haven't really approved this yet, and I think it's good to know that. This is something we're all kind of looking at together, and I think that should be fully understood. Hopefully, it's something we can come to an agreement on. Because I, you know, I'm not a leading advocate in this area of recycling, but I've come to listen to a lot of the people who appear at our, at our meetings who are very passionate about the subject. And I, I think it's very important. What I like, what I believe has happened, this is not something the city of Marquette is trying to foist on the Solid Waste Authority or vice versa. I think the staff have done a good job from both organizations at looking at the issue, looking at what can be done, you know, looking how it can be approached, looking at what the cost factor will be, looking at what the results can be. It seems to me the estimate you made were really kind of understated as far as the potential profit, if you want to call it that, from recycling. So I'm hoping this is something we can find a way to move forward on. As far as, you know, the Waste Authority building it in the city, you know, it's not going to be used just by the city. You know, it's going to be used by other, other units of government. I think also other, other entities within the city may, as somebody pointed out, commercial facilities, which are now part of our collection system, could also make use of this. So I, I think it's a, it's a real opportunity. I agree with Commissioner Coyne. You've got to have incentives. You know, I think we have people out there who have passion on this subject. We have people who could care less. And then we've got kind of a big group in the middle. And I think that's where the incentive comes in. And I think, as you pointed out, if we have to buy less green bags, that's, that's a good thing. I'm looking at my kitchen where now I'm going to have to have three containers instead of two, but yeah, I'm sure we can all work that out. But I, I think it's, it's a, it's a good way to go down the road.
Trustee Benzie?
Yeah, and the last thing is, I don't want to come off as though I'm against this. I see a lot of the benefits to it. But one of the other questions that has surfaced is, in order to make this work, I really think there needs to be a shared risk in the proposal from both the city and the landfill authority. And there's a lot of people, myself included, that don't really understand worst case scenarios and what could go wrong and how we're sharing that risk. In simple terms, as I understand it, the city will provide the land, we will pay for the capital improvement costs, interest-free, run the facility and charge you back over a period of 30 years. You provide the water and sewer. What happens if the bottom falls out two years down the road and we have a substantial capital investment into the structure? I mean, those are, you know, it's not, again, that I don't want to see this happen. I want to feel comfortable, I think, with shared risk in the process.
I don't want this to sound like a debate between the two of us, but I do want to, I think the city of Marquette is taking a big risk too. You know, we're, we're agreeing to go into this kind of a program, which is going to change our whole waste haulage contract, you know, which is going to change our whole system. And we're, you know, we're kind of banking on this working too. So I don't think the city is going in risk-free. I think once we make this commitment to do it, we're going to have a lot of, a lot on the block.
I want to insert a question here. The 30-year life of this agreement, what period would you amortize the cost of the facility over? Would that be 30 years or?
20.
20. So at, at the, once the facility's paid off, are you going to then lower the rate or probably charge the same rate for, for dumpage?
Well, that would be, it would, I guess it would be a question for the city commission and the Solid Waste Authority Board of Trustees.
If there, if there wasn't a credit in the rate, then we would be paying interest because we'd be paying one-third interest, an additional 10 years. Commissioner Coyne then, Mr. Baldwin?
Maybe a little bit of history. I started working on similar projects in '72, so I have a little history in this type of thing. I think what's missing here is separating the capital cost from the operating costs. I think if we're going to build a facility, that's a capital investment. And as Fred mentions, like a bond issue, whether, whether the bonds are sold on the commercial market or whether the landfill purchases them, it's a similar situation. So I think that that's a known thing. We have a cost, whether it's $360,000 or $500,000, whatever it is, that's the investment in the capital and a program to pay that off in the 20 or 30 years. Now, it's been mentioned here, and perhaps correctly, that there may be other communities besides just the city of Marquette using this, okay? That's been inherent in the discussion. Republic won't be hauling here. Michigami won't be hauling here. You know, the whole West End wouldn't consider driving past the landfill to get down here. So there's, there's some, some communities will benefit and some won't. I think if it's handled as a, as a capital investment project and we decide how those costs are going to be distributed, then we have the operating cost of it, and those will change as time goes on, the amount of waste coming through, a whole variety of things. I look back, I remember Burt Boyham telling me there will never be anything built on the north side of the highway in Ishpeming, ever. Okay? And I don't know if you were at that meeting or not. You might have been. But, you know, so to look 30 years into the future, we just take our best shot at it, okay? But, but I do really think that it, we should separate the two costs. Now, further on, I want to say that I think we should be doing everything we can to promote recycling. Okay, I don't, I'm not against that. But the problem we have, we have some entities in the, that the authorities represent, and we're saying, we're not being treated fairly now, and they're not going to appreciate if they think Marquette's getting a big, nice lollipop down here and they're, they're paying for it. Because they want to see it's fairly distributed, I guess what I'm saying.
Commissioner Coyne?
I know we can't look 30 years into the future, but with certainty, but I have a question of Mr. Aho. You've said this before. Given our present 40% recycling percentage, how long is this landfill going to last? And then the second question is, if you do attain 80%, how long will the landfill last? Those are key questions for everybody to say, hey, I want to participate in this, as opposed to however long you say this landfill is going to last, we're going to have to go through a siting and all that again, which is profoundly expensive. So how long will this one last? And how long will it last with a marked increase in recycling?
Well, the landfill life is a function of, you know, the, you know, what is being brought in. The economics of the county dictate that. We have well in excess of 50 years of life, far longer than the 30-year contract number. You know, if, say, in a hypothetical 80-year life, if you take away half of the waste stream, it'll last twice as long, so 160 years, which is, you know, longer than anybody right here will care about. So, you know, the, the economics of this are that the, while the authority and the city has exposure, you know, this is a, an economically sensible, very conservative undertaking. You know, sure, the value of the recyclables could go to nothing, but, you know, the value of the recyclables has increased, and the number of outlets for the material has increased also. So, you know, it is, we're assuming that with decreasing resources, that, you know, the reuse of the material will become more and more lucrative. And now, that isn't necessary, but it's probable that that will occur. No matter what, you know, you're looking at, you know, even if there was no value in the material, you're still saving the cost of landfilling it and watching it forever because there is a perpetual care responsibility to Marquette County for the landfill. The most sensible thing to do is to make it last for forever, and then you don't have to worry about the post-closure responsibilities. You know, it's, that may, in itself, may be the most sensible economic incentive for recycling. Because unless, you know, the city of Marquette and the Solid Waste Authority get together on this, you know, you're going to burden the future generations of Marquette County considerably, you know? And without the two of us, it isn't going to happen. You know, there aren't any private haulers that can do what the Solid Waste Authority can do. And the city of Marquette has the majority of the material in the entire county. So it makes sense that we work together. You know, the $360,000 is what's been arrived at. We haven't really had time to define what that's going to be. The Solid Waste Authority is very good at building things, and we would anticipate, you know, seeing it's our nickel, to minimize what the costs are. So the same service that you've been receiving for the last 20 years would be attacking this problem and minimizing costs. Because, you know, it makes sense that we don't utilize our resources for something that we don't have to.
Trustee Langton?
I think we will do well. We have two sides of the legal beagles here. We have versions of ours. The city commission has versions of theirs. And I think by working together and having both legal entities put the wordage together, so we both benefit in the long run. I do agree that we need to go forward with both organizations and have the legal guys do the proper verbiage for us to, to make it forever. Thank you.
I was just going to add for the question that you asked, Carr, that, that fee, the intent behind how that fee is set up is that fee is derived on an annual basis. And yes, you do have an operating expense for the facility and a capital expense that you're putting forth every year. And that fee is derived off of both of those to make sure you're covering both of those. So we would be paying a fee, and then any profit would be used, or the city will be using that to offset that cost.
If, if I may, using Scott's number of $7 a square foot, and again, we realize that's pie in the sky, my quick math tells me that's a little bit under $2.6 million. That's a fair amount of change for the value of the property. Again, we're picking numbers here, but that's, that's a lot of money. I tell you, I am very enthusiastic over this. This is one of the best things that has come in front of this commission in a long, long time. I think it's visionary. I think that's critical, that we see what the good side can be, see where we're going. I think it's realistic. I think the numbers, as we look at them, really do work and make it to both of our benefits. The plus in recycling, we can't keep digging a hole and throwing this stuff in the ground. It doesn't work. At some point, we run out a hole. And whatever we can do that extends the life of that, ultimately will pay off not only for my kids, but their kids and their kids. So, you know, using the numbers that Rick's got. We've got to do this. Whether it looks like this or it looks like this, we've got to do it. You know, we all talk about sustainability, and that's the buzzword, and a lot of folks look at it and just kind of use it as a buzzword, but it's real. And if we can't be sustainable in Marquette County, if we can't handle our own, to use the term, garbage, and sort it out right and make it work, where can they do it? And this is the place that we can. And again, I am just very, very enthusiastic over this, and I look forward to hopefully both boards coming to, coming together on an agreement that we can make work. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benzie and then Senator Ajayi.
Having worked that tipping scale at waste management, this, this excites me. I do have a good memory still where I remember a semi twice a week coming up from lower wa- Wisconsin to get our recycling. And I thought, "Wow, they're so nice." But I think you're right. I think it is a very lucrative business. I do want to say I'm very sensitive to the points that the authority has brought up about the total buy-in from the county, because I do feel the city of Marquette would most likely be the biggest beneficiary of this. I think there are some more out there. One question I have, though, because I do see this growing and certainly paying for itself in time, can the authority right now, the Marquette County Waste Authority, accept recycling, not trash, from outside of our boundaries of the county lines? Because where does Eskenaba go? Where did these other places go? If we were sending our recycling all the way down to southern Wisconsin to get recycled, is there any possibility? Is that?
That would be a question for the Solid Waste Authority Board. We, you know, at this time, we aren't, but, you know, as time goes on, it would probably make sense to allow other municipalities to work with us, because, you know, with our central location, we can be a big hub. Or, you know, they can work out a transfer station-type situation, where their transfer trailers could come to our facility, and then we could move the material to other places. And, you know, again, it'd be subject to a negotiation on, you know, what value they get, because they're not Marquette County, they're not, they have no buy-in into the Solid Waste Authority, but, you know, it could still be beneficial for all parties considered. It's a volume-based situation. You know, the more volume you have, the better the program works.
Commissioner Ajayi, or, excuse me, Commissioner Benzey, are you done? Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to...
I wanted to give just a couple answers, and they're reflections from my dialogue with my colleagues here at the table. But on the issue of what the land is worth, I remember originally asking that question and trying to figure out what the comparables were. And if you look at how that corridor is being developed and some of the areas surrounding that, a lot of it is residential, a little bit further north. You're seeing pretty substantial homes being built along that McClellan corridor, and then plans with gray walls a little bit to the west, being one of the premier golf courses in the area. And we took all those things into account when Scott was speaking earlier to the impact. But kind of the low-end value on the other side of the $7 a foot, lots in that area for the building that's going on are running anywhere from $40,000 to $60,000 an acre. So if you look at that for an eight-acre plot, you're looking at something roughly in the area of $400,000 to $500,000, depending on who might be developing and what the characteristics of that were. And so offsetting that against the capital costs of putting the facility in, it was kind of a wash at the low end, and it could only be more, depending on what other alternatives there might be. The second part, and speaking to the concerns about the full 22 municipalities and how we would share the benefits of this, part of this is an economy of scale. And what you've heard is the predominant amount of recycling that's being generated in the area is really coming out of the city. But if you think of it as material, not as refuse, in effect, we would be mining that recycling stream. And the benefits of that, you're hearing about what the city split might be coming out of that. But the split to the Solid Waste Management Authority could be applied however your board would see fit. And so if there were concerns that the West End had about their tipping fees, the portion of the value that's being recovered from this operation could easily go to offset the cost that you might see on the West End, until such a time when the value of doing something similar there could be established. And so the actual value isn't something that just Marquette would see, but it's something that would be borne by everybody who's a member of that, of the Solid Waste Management Authority. And I think, as it was Rick who originally said, is we're basically just burying all that value now. And for the individual communities that are participating in this, depending on your waste management contract, depending on how your hauling contracts operate, typically the company that's hauling that material is the one that's getting all the benefit. And so the real issue here is not necessarily how we all benefit from doing something like this, but it's really recapturing that and putting it towards more community good. So what we would propose for our part of the agreement, and I think you've heard it, is we could use whatever revenue is generated above and beyond that cost recovery that the fee represents, to really offset the cost of that curbside hauling service that we have in the community. For the additional value that's generated to the Solid Waste Management Authority, that's something that you otherwise wouldn't be getting, and it could certainly be applied in whatever equitable way that the board saw fit, potentially to include addressing some of the issues on the West End. So I recall from our deliberations, we had anticipated some of this discussion, and we felt pretty comfortable that it was something that really doesn't just represent a benefit to the city, that a lot of the recycled material is really going to help the benefit of everybody.
Commissioner Coyne?
Okay.
Trustee Baldwin?
I guess a partial response to Scott. On item seven in the proposed agreement, it says be applied at a per-ton basis. And the capital cost is independent of whether it's processed one ton or 1,000 tons. The capital cost is the same. So I don't believe that should be on a per-ton basis. I think the per-ton basis should be on the processing of the waste, and the capital investment should be some arrangement that is paid for. I don't know, I don't have those, that approach or those numbers yet, but I think they need to be separated. As far as managers' comments, I don't have any disagreement with them. I think we need to put down facts and figures and see where they come out, not just say, "I think it's a good idea, and let's go there," you know, especially to try to sell this benefit, which I agree will be a benefit, to the people on the West End who are trying to figure out where they're getting this benefit from. So I think if we can, for example, demonstrate the value to the people who aren't using this recycle facility here, the value they're receiving in lieu of that, or however you want to call it, you know? So I think, I'm an engineer. I like to see real numbers, not, "I think this is a good idea" type thing. And...
Commissioner Ryan?
I'm not an engineer, but I worked with many of them, and Carr and I go way back, so this is not a personal comment at all. But I did have to react to the lollipop issue. You know, they say beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and probably only Rick could see beauty in a landfill. But I think as you look at this deal, you know, I know where you're coming from, and I know you have to respond to, you and everyone else, to all the other constituents in this organization. You know, and they may look at it like, "Well, Marquette's getting some kind of a deal." I don't think that's the case. I think Marquette and the Solid Waste Management Authority are partnering on something that can mean a heck of a lot for all of Marquette County. And Marquette County is willing, or Marquette City is willing to step forward and help make that process work. And I didn't come to this party that easily. I had to be convinced that this was a good idea. You know, and I think we've had prior discussions from Scott and from Rick, you know, and they made a strong case that if we can move forward on this recycling, it's going to be good for all of us. And so based on that, I think me and others on this commission have been willing to move forward. But I really do think it's not just something for Marquette's benefit. I think Marquette is taking some risk here, too, and in the process is hopefully opening the door for others to benefit from this. So I think it's a real positive thing. And so I do see some beauty in the deal.
Commissioner?
I believe we had a turning point in life, like the landfill authority was 20-some-odd years ago. We're at a turning point right here. And I believe firmly that between the City Commission and the landfill authority, we are going to be setting the next 40 to 50, or 60, or 70, or 80, or 100 years forth now, with the decisions that we're making right now, and it's a positive direction. Early on in my career at the landfill, the census was, recycling is not important. We operate the landfill on burying it, and that's how we make money. Well, we have changed our thoughts on doing that, because now we have to look at the longevity of the landfill itself. And the state of Michigan does not just nilly-willy permit additional landfills. There has been a moratorium on landfills, expansion of landfills. And so the ones that we have, we have to really, really look at closely in making these landfills last as long as we can. And so we are setting some really, really serious precedents here in the future operation of how we operate this and how we make everything last for the next, perhaps, two generations or more. And so this is a critical point, turning point, and I'm looking forward to being part of this turning point to make our community much, much more conservative in disposing of garbage and recycling. Thank you.
I just want to make sure that, I don't think anyone said this tonight, but I, and I think we, I don't speak for others, but I think we all feel it. You guys have done a heck of a job. You've done an outstanding job. And Rick certainly has done an outstanding job in making this landfill one of the most outstanding facilities anywhere, and keeping the fees at the level they have. This has been a real service to the people living in Marquette County. So only the highest regards to all of you for the role you've played in that. And hopefully, we can, again, move this forward. But the Marquette County Solid Waste Authority is outstanding, and it's really done a wonderful job. And I hope all the citizens who are watching understand that, that they've got the lowest rates going, and that's because of the way they've managed this operation in the past.
Trustee Yell?
Yeah, well, you know, we thank you for those comments, and I've only been with the landfill for two and a half years. But talking about recycling, I've heard nothing, basically, but positive from this board, you know, as far as being in favor of recycling, and I think we showed that by the programs we have out there at this time. And I'm excited about this, but there again, I need to have meetings with this board and get their input, and we need to review. Yeah, but I thank you for your comment. I think there's agreement on direction. Just to kind of give you an idea, Rick, can you kind of give us an overview? What did we expend on construction of the last cell? How many cells do we have? And how many cells could we possibly get into that existing footprint? Just to give everybody an idea of what you're talking about.
We spent about a million or two on the last cell, and that was cell four. That is the last cell in its current...
There. That's the last cell on this current construction permit to expand farther. We will have to re-permit. We have approximately nine cells outlined in the site itself that, you know, will go down in capacity. The smallest one will be number nine on the end. You know, conserving the facility's footprint, you know, we can carve out rock and things like that to, you know, double the overall life of the facility. But it, you know, will be more and more expensive as time goes on. Is that what you're looking for?
That was my point. You know, to build a cell is expensive. We used our own people. If we'd have used outside contractors, we'd have been looking at a considerable amount more funds expended to construct that cell. And we're very fortunate to have the people out there that can do this kind of thing, and it's probably built to a higher standard than it would have been if we'd hired people who were outside of the area. These people are committed to this site. We're very fortunate to have the kind of employees that we've got out there. And just to comment on the land, if I could find eight and a half acres in this town for $360,000, I'd buy it no matter where it was. You know, I'd also like to say, when we talk about all the ownership of the landfill, Market City is considered 52% of that ownership, because barring some of the mining waste that's come in recently, 52% of what's hauled in comes from the city and is paid for by city residents.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any further, last comments from staff?
No, I don't think we have anything further tonight. Like I mentioned at the outset, this is an agreement we'll certainly keep refining, and we'll be coming to both of your individual boards in the future. But thank you, everyone, for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you. No further comments? We adjourned.